Right before you leave your last meeting.
I know, whatever. He gave me the best. Oh, really? That's how I am.
How we doing over there?
Festival good.
Yeah.
Okay.
We never, we didn't get any maps.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda is an E and A transfer. It's from contracted services to software. And it transferred to cover the overage due to bulk software purchase. Is there any questions about it?
I was, I was told that, you got it right?
Yeah.
It's just software change. We're gonna buy their, they had the, it's a.
It's for section eight income verification.
Software maintenance package, right? That's what we had.
Okay.
So it's, it should say contracted services. So what happened was section eight went through some employment changes. And during that time where they typically would send multiple income verifications out, you know, once a month, twice a month, they would, they accidentally did it daily, not knowing. So it's usually more if you do it more, more often. So that's the purpose of the transfer. That's what happened. I talked to Say in section eight about it. She did address the issue and it's not going to be a problem anymore, so.
So from now on, this year when we do the, this coming year when we do the budget, we're gonna be putting this thirty grand into.
No, so the budget is usually.
Software?
No, it shouldn't say, that's, that was my mistake. It shouldn't say software.
What should it say?
Contracted services.
So they both should say contracted services.
No, you're moving money from the software line to the contracted services line to cover that overage.
Okay. So for now on, you're gonna put it into contracted services?
Yes. I mean, the budget is gonna, the cost might go up. I mean, the budget is already ninety thousand dollars for that line. So it might go up a little bit, but moving forward it should stay steady.
Is this a one-time transfer?
Yeah.
It's a one-time thing, right?
This should, this should stay even.
And it's.
And it's federal funds. Yeah, and it's federal funds.
So if we have the contracted services line expected to go up, does that mean the software line is expected to go down for the new fiscal year coming up budget?
No, so this is a one-time when you're transferring. We're transferring money from the software line to the contracted services line because we did not use that software line. And the purpose of this transfer this year is just because of employment changes, there was miscommunication and the process wasn't followed the way it should be, so there were a couple of different charges, right?
So do we expect to use that software line in the future?
Section eight, I don't know, Brian, you can answer that?
I believe the line will be used in the future, not to the, not to the extent that we're asking currently under this transfer though.
This is in general fund, this is CDB.
Sure.
Any other questions? If not, we'll close this and move on to the second piece, which is a proposed resolution authorizing an engineering planning grant for Neal Creek flood plan restoration project.
Yeah, and I apologize, apparently the maps did not get into the package. But if I can, hopefully, everybody's aware, knows where Hazelhurst Ave is off of Sunset, Maryland.
Gilmore Village.
Gilmore Village.
It came by email.
Yeah, it came by email, okay. So what happens through there is behind Hazelhurst, and I think that Arcadia goes over that, the Hallicks Ravine runs through there, which is really kinda Nail Creek. Goes behind there and then takes a turn by the, by the north-south arterial and heads down and it goes underground and heads all the way to the Mohawk, you know? Most of it's underneath the city, under the brewery, and goes all the way through. That, yes, yep, that conduit is an important conduit for, you know, any sewer separation we do. So it's imperative that, that conduit has capacity. When we had the storms, I don't, I think it was two thousand seven, whenever the arterial was flooded a couple of times, one of the problems was the capacity of Nail Creek.
Was it just coming right up through the?
Yeah, and once Nail Creek gets, once Nail Creek gets backed up, then you can't, you know, your storm sewers in that vicinity are not gonna accept any more water and you're gonna, you know, you're gonna flood out the, in that case flood out the arterials in the localized areas there. So we looked at different ways to relieve the capacity issues at Nail Creek. And there's, there's a few different things that need to be done, but this is an upstream solution where we add, it's called flood benching. You take the width of the creek and you put benches on either side, you're taking the creek, you're not taking it at creek bottom and widening it, but you're going up and creating a bench and making that creek wider. And this would be behind Hazelhurst and Arcadia, that area. So that, that creates, slows down the water, creates storage, and, you know, gives Nail Creek an additional capacity, you know, during those storms because the water's being held back in that bench.
So is that gonna be near Hallicks or is it gonna be farther down?
On Hal, you know, kind of makes the ninety-degree turn, right? You go, the Hallicks Ravine comes from Cavalry Cemetery, basically, right? And heads right to, through Dennis C Street, you know, past the Sunset.
Or through Kenny.
Yeah, so he, and then it takes a ninety-degree turn where it's an open channel into Nail Creek along the arterial for a while. Would be on both sides, behind Hazelhurst and then when you take the turn along the arterial.
It's all, who owns the land?
Mostly city-owned land. Some areas could be in the DOT right of way, which would seek an easement. But basically the city has, especially the area behind Hazelhurst is a city, is city-owned. So.
So the benches are in the area that's, that's exposed or you gotta dig up like around it or it's underground?
So the benches, no, in an open area isn't exposed.
The open area.
Yeah, because in that area, when it comes down as Hallicks Ravine, behind Hazelhurst and takes, takes that turn of the arterial, it stays open all the way almost to Berthel.
Okay.
So that's an area that we.
So they have to score everything down?
Yeah. The other, the other area, the other thing in that area is it is a FEMA flood, hundred-year floodplain area. So any localized flooding that neighborhood would get, would also, this project would also help. So, and kind of twofold, kind of a localized area helping any flood issues there, but also assisting and helping the capacity of Nail, capacity and storage of Nail Creek. So, yeah.
I got a question. Did they ever get dredged?
Well.
The reason why I say that is because, you know.
Can I answer? We dredge that up on Hallicks every time we know rain's coming. We're there all the time.
Okay. Yeah, it gets, you know, it gets tricky with D C permits, you know, and we can make kind of cases to dredge other areas, but yeah.
Sometimes they fill up with all the soot.
Yeah.
The leaves, the trees, yes.
So, you know, we, when we examined the creek for various solutions, this was one of them, among other alternatives. And the D C, we got a call from the state and said we would love, we have a grant program. We'd love to see this project in it. The grant program is a ninety percent grant. So we have, you know, we have a two point five million dollar project at its maximum because I don't think it's actually gonna be that much. So it's ten percent of that is the, is the local match.
Ten percent, whatever you spend.
Ten percent's only the local match, ninety percent covered by the grant. And what we're trying to, what we're doing right now, we're trying to look at ways that, you know, right now that matches the city obligation. This work won't be done till maybe late next fall or early in two thousand twenty-seven. So we have time to budget for it. But in the meantime, we're looking, talking to the county about covering summer all of the two fifty, or we can look at other state grants. So we're working with that, so.
It's not saying we support it.
Yeah, right, this resolution, what it does is allows, we need this paperwork by mid-December because the agency needs it back, allows the mayor to sign the grant disbursement agreement. And, you know, says that the city's, the match obligation's ten percent. The city understands that match obligation of ten, two hundred fifty thousand.
Time works towards the two, right?
Vote on this thing.
It does, but yeah.
Everybody's good with that.
Okay, we'll, we'll close this and thank you very much.
Yep, yep, and no other questions? Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll take it some later for you.
Not gonna be back in seven. Thanks, everybody. Okay, all right.
So we'll go on to proposed ordinance number three, proposed by council member Gloss Maltestah, an ordinance establishing district-wide garage sale initiative for the city of Utica setting a permit fee.
Want to just wait until she comes back to explain this a little bit?
Yeah.
Let's hold it, let's hold it.
We can hold it, not a problem. Now, the next piece is, City of Utica, New York Propose Local Law Number Four of the year two thousand twenty-five, a local law amending the Utica City Code, Charter twenty-five to include implementation of the City of Utica occupancy tax. So this is that bed tax. Is there any questions?
Yeah, I have some questions.
We'll have to lay this one on the table tonight, right?
Like the table, I got some questions.
Okay, Jack, too.
So, I mean, just speak on this a little bit. I know we gotta lay on the table, but.
I had some changes I wanna make on it.
As far as?
Where the money's going.
Okay.
They wanna put everything into a general fund.
I don't think, you can't do that, though.
Well, that's what they got in here if you read it. And I think that seeing that this has to do with tourism and everything, I think that the, a good part of it should go to, to grounds and, because that's, that's, that's where it should've been put together when they wrote it. It should've went to an area, and earmarked over there.
To my understanding, it was coming to parks and D P W.
I know, he changed it though. Don't we have something in committee from last time?
It was changed where it's supposed to go to parks, not all parks in D P W. But it was supposed to help us.
Well, it should say, listen, if you're gonna write, you gotta earmark it, all right? So this should say earmark fifty percent is gonna go to parks.
I understand.
And maybe the other fifty percent could go to maybe to roads.
I was under the impression all of it was going to parks.
I heard it was all.
All going to parks.
No, it's going to parks.
I read it on my emails, Warren.
Yeah, but he changed, let me ask you a question. Don't we have from the last meeting, didn't this come up when we put something in committee?
Yes, I don't.
Didn't, or we just talked about it last time?
I think the corporation council updated something on this. I just don't know what yet.
Okay, but we have, isn't there something already in committee now or am I missing it?
You're right, there is.
There is.
We laid it on the table.
Right, and what we laid on the table two weeks ago was for the D P W and parks.
Well, that's what he's saying, but it's not in the writing.
And the new one, they just came up with a new one tonight. Okay, so let's put it in committee and have a committee meeting. Have a meeting five o'clock next week.
I thought they wanted to vote on it tonight. Don't they vote on this tonight?
Well, we can't because this new one, we have to lay on the table for seven days anyway.
No, it's gotta lay on the table, the new one.
And if the mayor's listening, anybody from the administration, next time law department sends something, I would appreciate a representative from the office to come in, just hash it out with us. But if we have a committee meeting on it, hopefully that, our questions will get answered there.
Yeah, either way, Frank, we gotta land. Should be here, she is ready, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna lay this, lay this on the table.
Put it in committee.
And then we're, put it in committee.
So are we gonna have Andrew, we'll have a five o'clock meeting to discuss this at the next meeting? Everybody good with that?
The next meeting?
For December third?
Yes.
Okay, so the only, the only piece we have is the garage sale.
Well, with, Bob, if I may.
I'm sorry.
We have a meeting on December third. I think we, we have to do what we have to do to make sure it's in final form because I'll have to lay on the table again for a week if we make substantive changes so we can vote on it December seventeenth.
So you wanna have a meeting next, whenever you guys wanna have a meeting.
I mean, I guess the point is just allowing us enough time to.
We need to get this approved inside. So if we wanna have a meeting.
Let me take a look.
Next Wednesday, we have a meeting at six o'clock or five?
Thanksgiving Eve.
I mean, I don't know, he's saying you can't do it.
I don't, I don't know the details of it, but I think per the New York State law that passed that it has to go to general fund?
No, it isn't because the counties, the counties goes to tourism.
Well, I know, that's the county law.
Our, the Senate, yeah, they passed that it can be for the general fund. They kept it pretty broad, so it's up to us to distribute it how we see.
And I guess the, the point is whatever we decide to have it in its final form, it has to lay on the table another week after we make changes. So we have to allow ourselves enough time.
Let's have it on the twenty-sixth then. Twenty-sixth.
I might be out of town, that's the night before Thanksgiving, that's all. But if we could do.
How about the twenty-fifth?
Let's do it Monday.
Twenty-fifth.
Oh, I can't do it Monday.
It'll still be on the table by then.
Oh, November?
Even if we did it December third, we could do a special meeting on Wednesday after if we wanna expedite passing it.
How about Monday, the twenty-fourth? Is everybody good on that?
No.
It'll still be laid on the table, so we can't change anything yet.
If you do it at fi, if you do it at five o'clock, I can make it.
You don't have to lay it on the table yet.
You don't have to.
Put it in committee and then adjust on Monday.
You don't have to.
Yeah, never mind.
So what are we doing?
We could just put it in committee and then.
Do it on the Thursday at five o'clock?
There you go. Five, five-thirty.
Five-thirty, if you wanted to make changes, you can make changes on the table if it hits final form.
We'll say five-thirty on Wednesday, give me a date. Better next meeting.
I would do five o'clock just for the extra time, just in case.
Yeah, and you know what? Yeah, but you know what? You'd probably be talking about that garage sale thing too, so.
And the, the point with this, with the bed tax is, I mean, we're, we're involving large corporate hotels that are certainly gonna run this by their council, Airbnb probably. So we wanna make sure we get it right because this isn't a situation where we're just tossing it out there. They're gonna be large corporate, in-house council looking at these to make sure everything fits, and if it doesn't, it's probably gonna get challenged, so.
And at the end of the day with this bed tax, this bed tax is gonna help the citizens all over that would help those owners because their taxes won't be going up as high as they would.
Well, regardless, substance aside, just procedure, we wanna make sure we get everything locked in.
I'm sure the mayor already did his background for.
Well, they must've changed this because originally what we have in committee right now, it basically says it's for the D P W and parks. So there must be a reason that they changed it for general fund, that it came down that you can't do that. So we need to talk about it.
They did.
Huh? Yeah, okay. All right, so five o'clock, next one, next.
December third.
December third, okay.
The only piece we got left is, is same speech.
We'll put it in committee.
We'll just put it in, we'll put it in committee.
And if we can ask, request the coast department.
And we can talk about this the same time we.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, that's why it's at five o'clock.
Yeah, to discuss all that.
I agree, Bob.
Okay.
I'm requesting a coast department to be here for the garage sale. Anybody else you think?
Yep.
For anybody else that we should invite, and law department for December third.
Should have law department here for, I think you probably need the law department for the garage sale one too.
Why, you're having a garage sale?
I'm not, I'm just called by the.
That's all he's talking.
Used by the whole thing.
Were you selling Poppy's clothes?
What?
Were you selling Poppy's clothes?
I gave them all away. Poor Poppy.
Is there anything in committee you'd like to bring out? If not? Motion to adjourn?
I'm just, I'm in the pre-meet. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Come to order, the city clerk will take the roll.
Ayalo Burmaster, Vitar Carcone, Irvin Beatrice Williamson, Glossmo Testa, Lomenco, all pregnant.
Please rise for to pledge allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the common council.
Allegiance to the flag of United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion and a second to dispense the reading of minutes from the previous meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Public comment period allows three minutes per speaker. Our first speaker is Francis Brown. Francis, common council has provided you a copy of section 3244, public comment period. Are you in agreement?
Yes.
Thank you, Francis.
The homeless and the hungry. This is not just the Utica issue, this is an everywhere issue. Unfortunately, after long fought battles with my former landlord and the icing on the cake, after my emotional support animals' lives were threatened, I had become homeless myself. But everything has purpose, like finding out that the United County will not enforce the Fair Housing Act to house myself and the emotional support animals in Utica, or the conditions the homeless are put in during the extreme cold weather. Let's just say my last residence was a palace compared to the motel room I am staying in. They force you to use your SNAP, your supplementary nutrition assistance program, keyword nutritional, on microwave foods, in order to have a hot meal. Due to being placed in this rundown motel, that sole purpose is not homeless, that I cannot even be provided with restaurant vouchers. The rundown motel I was placed in only provides a complimentary breakfast that is sometimes leftovers from the day before. Yummy. This needs to be fixed on a local level, not just Utica, but everywhere. Something to help decrease the homeless population is a 24-hour, 24/7 navigation center. This center can help find permanent housing, but also inform the person of need of services available in the area. There is a 24-hour hotline through ICAN, but the issue is, you cannot see that person. Some people like myself prefer to talk to someone personally, some people are not very tech savvy, some are just embarrassed. I've already gave my recommendation on who to run the program. Some of you see it as a blight, I see it as a struggle, as a human being is going through, whether it's a hard time, or an addiction problem, or mental health, they are still a human being. Instead of complaining, do something within your power to help. It could be as simple as giving a can of peas to a food pantry, or taking that person out for a meal and listening to their story. There are many other things that you could do too. The worst part is me being exiled from the city that I have true love for, and even after all the wrong it has done to myself and my ESA, I would like to see change for the better. And who better to do that than someone that has nothing to lose, and only can gain by seeing the city he was born and raised and turned into the little, the best little city ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Francis. Our next speaker, Carolyn McLeese. Carolyn, common council has provided you a copy of section 3244, public comment period. Are you in agreement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello. I just wanted to remind everyone that nothing to report is just not acceptable. So, we'd like to hear what you're doing, what's going on in your departments and so forth. All of us would love to know that. And I really would like to wish Lucretia Hunt a very happy 98th birthday today. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. There's no guest speaker, communication from the mayor?
I did have a memo. Did everyone receive the memo? We don't need to go through it. Okay. The other thing is, as I stated before the meeting, I was at an event at MBCC, a joint event with the college, and I could not be here for the pre-meeting, but we are here now if there were any questions on the legislation that was sent down. I also just also want to reference that we did have the memo two weeks ago regarding this as well. So, if there's anything that needs to be answered, and you want to do that on the floor, that would be good. Just, we couldn't be here earlier, basically.
Councilman Beatrice?
Yes, mayor, we talked about it, and we put this in committee, because it had to lay on the table anyways, but there was, the main question was, I know two weeks ago, when it originally came up, the funds were going toward the parks and the DPW, and in this new piece of legislation, it's saying it's going into the general fund, so I think that was a concern, and we were going to have a meeting and talk about that, if you just want to speak on that for a minute or so.
Yes. This is the only piece of legislation that was generated. There was not, this isn't like a new one. No, so.
You do, you do, but it's a separate local law, different local law.
Yeah.
But in that local law, it stated that the revenue was going toward for the police, or not for the parks?
No. So, let me explain, please. This had to be both driven through the state legislature and lodged in the state legislature. When I've been explaining what this funds, what the funds could be used for, on the radio interviews, to the interviews to the council, I've been stating that considering this is an occupancy tax, and the revenues would be generated essentially from tourism, both what I was suggesting it could be appropriated to, would to fund in part parks and DPW services. The reason for that is that if the state is going to allow a municipality to have a bed tax, or an occupancy tax, if you will, the state likes to see, before they vote on it, your intent, that intent they like to see tied to tourism. So, like I said, I have to reiterate multiple times, this is not a new piece of legislation, this is the only piece of legislation, and that is actually from the state statute and template for the occupancy tax local law that would be passed, that it goes into the general fund, just like our sales tax, our property tax, everything else. And the whole point of the discussion was, that would offset things such as the Parks Department, because that would be the most likely thing to be tied to supporting tourism, whether you're preparing for the Boilermaker, tending to the harbor, taking care of everything in between the hotels and the tournaments that people are attending. The state wants to see the use of those funds intended for tourism-based services, and the whole point was to bring in the occupancy tax, so that the property taxpayers aren't the only people paying to support the tourism-based services.
Okay, but if you're, if what you're saying, and it all makes sense, if they want to see it going towards something, why is it going to the general fund first?
That's how, the same thing with sales tax. So, I'll just, it's a, so same thing with sales tax. Sales tax goes, comes in as a revenue source, and then when we build the budget, we appropriate, so all your revenue side goes into a number, right? Ninety million. And then the expense side is where it all gets divided up, but that's revenue and expense. So this would be a revenue, and the expense would be that. If, at the state level, you have to rationalize what the occupancy tax is being used for, you can point to the fact that this new revenue, okay, is offsetting the cost to the taxpayers of things like DPW or parks. But it was never in a local law previously that way. That was the discussion on rationalizing why Utica, New York, which benefit from the use of an occupancy tax.
But we could earmark it and specify it then? I'm, so this legislation doesn't say that, but as a council?
So, well, that's part of the budget process. Every single thing in the budget on the expense side, once the council passes a budget, is by definition, the earmark of the council, right? So everything goes into the revenue on the budget, administration puts the budget together, goes to the NA, comes to the council, and then the budget that's passed by the council is the council putting the stamp on where all the money goes, right? The fact that it goes into the general fund is the standard function of how the occupancy tax would be remitted to the city, and then placed into the revenue streams, and then appropriated as a revenue, so that it could be utilized in the expense side of the budget. As far as this local law, to actually enact it, this is the standard template from the state statute in how that functions. Stephanie, if you want to reiterate that as well?
Yeah, so I took the language directly from the enabling law, which was passed by New York State in October, that said specifically, it has to go into the general fund. So that language came directly from the enabling statute.
Can you show that?
It's broad, but it doesn't mean you can't.
It was attached to, it should have been attached to the packet, but I have the...
I'm looking, I saw the one that was, that was, not in this one, I saw the one that was sent to me via mail, email, but I can't find it in here, where it says that it's going to go to the general fund.
So, in the, in the local law that we're actually passing?
Well, apparently this isn't the local law we're passing, because I want you to find it on here, so.
Because this is the first time it's been introduced, we just got it.
Well, okay, but it's not on here, so I'm saying.
So it says...
No, we'll find it, yeah, yeah. Sorry we couldn't be here earlier.
One...
Let Councilman Lomenco finish, please.
We're listening, Jack, just...
Right, I know.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, just...
Could you please explain that?
So, I looked at, so this is not the only city, obviously, or municipality that has a occupancy tax. There are several, I don't know if you saw, but the initial enabling statute is 1202-00, I mean, it goes to ZZ, I mean, there's hundreds in there. And I looked at several, Cortland, Binghamton, Syracuse, all of them, when I say use the exact same template, it is all the exact same template. The only thing that varies is certain things, so for example, some municipalities, the county, for example, has a 5% occupancy tax, ours is only authorized for 3. So certain things are changed within the enabling statute, but for the most part, everything is the same, and to change what the state is requiring for occupancy tax is problematic when you start messing with something that is working across the board.
Well, where does it say we can't make an amendment to this?
I guess you can, but I mean, if...
So, well, so, this is very similar to all of our other revenue sources. So, for example...
But, 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 listen, I was...
No, 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 so I just wanted, no, but the council does have the power to move it around, and I just...
During budget time, and I concur with you on that. But what's, what does it say in the state law?
In the state...
That once we get this, and it turns into a local law, that we can't make an amendment to it?
Right here, "Each enactment of such local law may provide for the imposition of a hotel or motel ta, oh, sorry. All revenues resulting from the imposition of a tax under the local laws shall be paid to the treasury of the city of Utica and credited to and deposited to the general fund of the city."
Like, that's from the state?
That's from the state.
But we can, we can make it stricter.
Mr. President, can I have a point of order? All the money that you receive in the general fund goes back to each department. So even if you earmarked $300,000, say you collect in the general fund for the Parks Department or DPW, you could just move that funds, those other funds that you receive from the other general fund and move it into another account. You're not restricting yourself from putting it into the general fund, by any means. Every money that you receive is money that's earmarked towards that. So I'm, I'm like, kind of confused of what you're trying to put it in what fund?
I just want to...
Because you're still collecting those same amount of funds, no matter what.
If I also may have the floor and speak on this.
What's that?
I would like to speak on the floor whenever she's all set.
Go ahead.
One of my things here is, I'm not necessarily for this bed tax. We're hearing from a lot of people who are in the industry who do have concerns, and I want to be sensitive to that. I'm not a no, but one of the things that made me inclined to do this is if we know it's being earmarked to appropriate places that do benefit, you know, are either, like we were saying, like capital improvements with parks or tourism. I do think that's a good way to earmark it, not just general fund. So that's where I, once we put in committee...
Let the mayor speak. Mayor has the floor.
Mr. President, can you just clarify who submitted this to the state? Because it went to the, it went to the state 9-0.
Functionally, no.
Everybody supported it.
So, here's the thing. It appears that the, what's being stated sounds like this is being sent to some general fund. The reason the state specifies that is that is how you take a revenue source from any, whether it's sales tax, property tax, state aid, et cetera, it gets deposited into the general fund, so that it can be appropriated for use in the budget. This is not a situation of, we're specifying how it's earmarked, this is a specification of how we take the money in, so that it can be deposited and utilized in each yearly budget for the operations of the city. From that point, it's the budget process which decides whether or not we do with it. But, councilperson, from what you're asking, it appears you want us, like earmark it for something different from general fund. The general fund is how you bring revenue source into the revenue side of the budget as a function of government. That's what the state is specifying.
So, logistically, that helps to differentiate that for me, but yeah, I...
So it's not one earmark or another, it's just, you know, we just did, the other thing I do want to add is this, over the last two years, it has been difficult, right, with the finances, with the budgets. And one of the things that I tasked upon myself was to attempt to figure out a way to bring in other revenue sources that would take pressure off of the sole use of property taxes, who we keep having to go back to. That was a tall task. We figured that out, and when we started this process about a year and a half ago, nobody thought we would be able to get this done, and frankly, we had a lot of critics saying that the state would not support Utica doing this, because the county already was. And not only did Utica, but Rome jumped in at the tail end of this and got added to our state legislation, and Rome is doing the exact same thing now. What I'm getting at here is, we are in dire need of more revenue sources that are diverse across how they're collected, where they come from, and it's been from this room where we've discussed countless times over the past decade, that we have such a good tourism base. How many times have people complained that we're taking care of the Boilermaker route, and it's the property taxpayers of Utica that are taking care of the Boilermaker route, for all of the runners that come here? Now, we're proud to do that, because it's a landmark event, right? But this literally solves that. It does create a situation where not only is this a revenue source that will be pretty sizable, so that's a major accomplishment that that was done, but then also, the offset it will provide, because it is very rare that I'm staying in a hotel in Utica, that anyone is staying in a hotel in Utica. The whole point...
Your words manage you.
Well, right, right, exactly.
And anyways...
Right, no, but, no, but so my point is, so my point is, this is, this is huge. This is huge. This is huge, yeah?
I'm good, I'm good with your answer.
Counselor Beatrice?
Just one, one, one thing, I just, well, three things, actually.
Also, we don't need to vote on it, we just wanted to explain it.
No, we're laying it on the table. But just a couple things for the whole council. We did a resolution that passed 9-0 to the state, all of us in support of that. That's why it passed, okay, one of the reasons. Number two, any hotel or anybody that's complaining, they're going to benefit from this, because their taxes are not going up as high as they would have gone up.
Correct.
Okay? And so people should realize this. And number three, why would we change? The state approved something we didn't think we were going to get approved. We got it approved, and we want to go in there and change their writing? It doesn't make any sense at all. I know, I'm just...
Let me just, can I interrupt you something?
Okay, so...
Let me just tell you...
All valid questions.
I understand. Let me just, let me just say something. Okay, what, when we went, this is why I wasn't sure, when we went actually to the state, the state says, well, you got to give us a reason why we'll pass it. And the mayor said, well, we have to put it through some type of tourism. So when it came back, it said, general fund. So I'm thinking, well, why can't we just go ahead and earmark it for the general fund, instead of putting it in, excuse me, earmark it for the Parks Department? Why would we have to go through that junk? And that was my question on this. Why couldn't we just earmark it? I think Steph answered the, answered the question for me, because it's a state statute, and that's how we got to do it. Come, come budget time, we'll see how much money comes in there, and then we could divvy it up the way we want.
And, and that's all valid points, what you're saying. My biggest concern is, when I'm hearing that there's property owners that are against this. If somebody talks to me that it's against it, you need to be a salesperson and tell them, guess what? Instead of your taxes going up 3%, they're going to go up 1% because of that. So that's how you need to talk to people, and you need to be smart about it. It's not going to hurt the hotel owner, it's going to help them. So, that's, you know, that should be letting them know.
Well, that's if we alleviate some of the property tax, but we're, we're looking to earmark this towards the, something else, not property taxes.
Right, but if you didn't get, no matter where it goes, if you get $800,000 from it, that's almost 2.5% off the budget. So, any way you look at it, it's a good thing, let's move on.
I just want to say one thing.
Yeah.
So say we receive money from parking tickets, right, that goes to the general fund. It doesn't necessarily go back to the police department's budget. Any money we collect goes back to the general fund. I mean, this has been common function of city government for, I can't tell you how long. We have never received money and then earmarked it for something specific, because it has to go to the general fund first in order to earmark it, because you can't earmark something that you don't know that you're going to receive. I mean, I don't know how much clearer you could get than that.
Yes.
I mean, and that, that to me is just something that's...
We're not earmarking an amount, we're just earmarking it when it comes in.
But technically, what you would be saying is that you would earmark money that you don't know that you're going to receive based on the revenue side. You can't earmark something unless you receive it on the revenue side. And that's, again, the basic function of city government and how you collect funds.
That's not, that's not exactly what we said, Stan. What we said, when it comes in, we'd like to put it in the Parks Department.
Right, but you were saying that it wasn't earmarked towards the general fund. Come on.
I'm done talking about it.
Judge Girmann.
I think it's, and it's not in committee, it's not laid on the table, but if the document that I have in front of me is what you want to lay on the table, that you can do pretty quickly. If you're going to try to amend that now, I would advise that, first of all, I've never seen this. I spent most of my time talking with a member of the corporation council's office during the week, but that was all about the service and notice claim law. We never talked about the county tax law. Now, the county tax law requires a lot of services out of the comptroller's office, and we have a new comptroller. I don't know if he's seen this or not, and I don't know what they know about their personnel. I don't know anything of that. That's not, that's not my concern, I'm only concerned about the legislature, which is you, the nine people here, and the president. So my advice is, if you're not going to do anything with this tonight, if you want to review it, then lay it on the table. Then you can amend it, but then, once you amend it, you have to lay it on the table again, for seven days. And I think that at some point, you might invite the comptroller to be elected here to discuss it, to see it, to make his comments. As far as my position, I didn't talk to Mr. Brown at all about this particular law. I don't know the source of it, I don't know the specifications of it, and I would have to review it thoroughly. I did talk to him extensively about the notice provision law, and we went over that, because that, I think, is in committee, right? That's in committee?
It's tabled.
Yes, it's in, it's in committee, yeah. So it's tabled, and that you can do what you want with tonight, or leave it there again until you're ready to do something about it, amend it, or pass it, or whatever. But I, that I have reviewed with Mr. Brown. And he told me, Mr. Brown did, that he thought that I would see amendments to that law. I called Andrew yesterday, and I asked him if there were any amendments to the local law that's laying on the table. Am I correct, Andrew?
Yes, sir.
And he said, no. So I had nothing to re-review. I spent most of Friday down here, through his lunch hour, going through what I thought I was doing for tonight's meeting. This county tax law, to me, is a new venture. We've never done that, but I know it exists in the county, and is, maybe I might have to talk to the county attorney too, and find out the sources of these laws, and I certainly would like to discuss it with Mr. Giorgio, who I think prepared this. Did you, Mr. Giorgio, did you prepare this?
I did.
And I would like to talk to her about it. So my suggestion is, you've heard from the mayor, and most of what he was talking about is where the money goes in the general fund during the tax situation, it'll have to after first of the year, and all of you are going to be here, so it doesn't, except the one person, it doesn't make any difference. That, that was a good thing for him to do. We know that part of the argument is finished, or at least, he has given you thoughts to consider, and possible further appearance by the mayor, to see if, after you review it, what you think you want to do with it, or where you think it belongs. There are, you, this council has gone through, I think, two budgets already, so they're very familiar with the process. And there's a couple of you, I think, are actually, maybe more, who are really experts on the... on the general fund more than I am. In any event, my suggestion is, if you want this particular document that is presently constituted, which I have just been handed to, you just lay it on the table and review it.
Judge, we said we were doing that in pre-meeting.
I know.
But that, that's only a suggestion.
Mayor, believe me.
You couldn't act on it anyway, other than put it on the table, because I think it's a new piece of legislation.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, believe me, that's Councilman Beatar.
Well, Judge, thank you. And yes, the only expectation was to lay it on the table. Just a couple of quick things, though. One, we did meet extensively with the current Controller and staff in the Controller's office to discuss this, and I did actually already meet with the soon-to-be Controller about this, and it's a potential implementation because he would obviously be the person who would be dealing with this. So I did actually already speak with Frank Mola, Controller-elect, as well about this, so that, and we had a conversation about how it would be rebidded, et cetera. And then the other thing, the sources. If this is laid at the table, this is why we did the memo two weeks ago to get everyone ready for this coming down. If it gets laid on the table, Assistant Corporation Counsel DiGiorgio would be glad to be with you on it, but just so we understand the sources, it was New York City Mayor's state statute from the state level that was required, and partnering municipalities through NICOM that have implemented the occupancy tax at the local level as second classings. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Beatar?
Thanks. Just a few clarifying questions, but going back first to the, the discussion on the general fund versus earmarking, as it was stated. I mean, the way, working through an example, I think the mayor had mentioned we're looking to have an additional revenue of anywhere from 600,000 to 800,000. If it was decided that half of that would be used to go toward DPW or Parks, I think the way we might see it in a budget is that amount increase in those budget lines for seasonal employees or contracted services. It goes through the general fund, but you're saying, oh, well, here's another 50,000 for this line in the expense side, here's another 70,000 in that line for the expense side. So I anticipate that's something that we may see. Is that correct, Mayor, to say we might see an increase on those, in those departments, if we're expecting that revenue to come in through the general fund?
Well, so, I mean, we're really getting to the nitty-gritty of the budget season because if there's a million more dollars in the general revenue, right, the general fund, in that budget year that we're preparing, for example, that would offset all of the others. So, for example, let's say sales tax was down a million, but occupancy tax brought in a million. You wouldn't see any of those differences, but what you would see was a net zero in that instance. If sales tax was level and the occupancy tax brought in a million dollars, you'd see an additional million dollars in the general revenue side to appropriate to your expenses. So, again, ask to go for you to use it for what you told us.
It's almost like a pre-commit.
So they just, they want to, they want to know, they want like a warm and fuzzy, like this is your intent before they vote on it. That's why all the discussion of that was, and frankly, it is what, what, you know, effectively it will do, but similar to how some of the other council people are discussing and what you're discussing, like I said, there's many revenue sources. If one of them's up a million and one's down a million, you won't see any difference on the expense side. So it all depends on what happens, right?
Can I, can I explain, and, and just to kind of.
Yeah, and then we're going to go through city offices.
But just, but very, but very quickly. So like, one time when we, when we were down on revenues, right, we increased parking fines from 25 to 50 dollars, right? That was to supplement the deficit of the budget. So people don't sometimes go after revenue sources until they know that they actually need the money. So the state, if you're flushed with funds, they probably won't give you the bed tax, not knowing that you need that to cover up what's basically going on. So again, they're not going to just add a bed tax and say, oh, here's additional revenue when there might be other municipalities that might need that, if that kind of makes sense. So I could kind of see why they're asking for those funds to specifically need it for something, if that kind of makes sense, right? You wouldn't increase parking fines just to increase parking fines unless you were looking for an additional revenue source.
No, well, from the state's point of view.
So just to go back to.
From the state's side, they have to cross their Ts and doubt their Is too, I mean, that's why they require it.
A hundred percent. That's why it goes back to the general fund and not yourself.
Looking at the proposed local law, just briefly, I have a few questions, maybe for the mayor or Corporation Council. I don't want to get too deep into the weeds here, but the definition section, permanent resident, 90 days for permanent occupancy, is that one of those things that's required by the state, or is there, is there leeway in the number of days?
No, that came from the state enabling legislation.
Okay. And something I think we may have to amend before laying this on the table, it's not, I wouldn't say this is substantive, we go from 1-25-26-66 to 1-22, so if we can make an amendment.
Yeah, that's oversight, yep.
Okay. And then finally.
Where is that? Because that could be.
Second page.
Page two.
It says 1-22 instead of 1-25.
So, for example, I understand you mentioned it wasn't substantive, however, if you did amend that 22 to say 25, it would be correct?
It would be, and I, and I can say that's not substantive, so if it was laid on the table, I can make those kinds of adjustments.
Yeah, I mean, while we're here tonight, I think maybe on the safe side, maybe amend on the floor. And then finally, going back to the state requirements versus where the city may have leeway, section 1-25-81, administration of oaths, compelling testimony, is that standard, that that office would, would have subpoena power and power of compelling affidavits?
Yeah, it's standard across all of the municipalities that have had enacted this legislation.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Anyone else? We'll go report of city offices, Brian Thomas, Urban Reno.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Brian. Stephanie DiGiorgio, Corporation Counsel.
Nothing to report.
Mick Brydenbacher, City Engineer.
Sure. As of today, we have all but one road. Woodbury is the only open road in the city. The paving will be commenced tomorrow, and we will be done with paving for the season minus any spot repairs that seem to pop up. Equally, we are actively putting together next year's list. Been hearing everybody's comments, complaints, and concerns. We're folding them into all the lists, and we are still using Pave Utica, it's going strong, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Almar Caltech, Budget Director.
We're still working on purchasing software. We've got a couple of DPW engineering have been using it, we're testing it out with them. There's a couple of kinks, but we're getting positive feedback. It's hopefully going to streamline, just a day, day-to-day, make people's jobs easier, so that, starting to work on the budget soon, so.
That's it.
Give me any money you can, when you come up.
Thank you. My new boss, Mark Sokolowski, DPW Commissioner.
Yes, a couple things. Number one, we are finishing up green waste. We are done in North, we are done in East, we're halfway through South, so once we get through South, Lower East Utica and West Utica, we will be completed for green waste for the year. We did have some snow over the last week. We struggled a little bit, but our guys came through, we got through it, we had some minor problems, and if any council people would like to come down and see how we worked that storm, that door's open. And I like Nick's jacket. Have a good night.
Thank you. Marcus Phillips, Commissioner of Codes.
I'd like Carolyn to know, I was going to say more, but because the last discussion was so long, I'm going to give everybody a break. So I have nothing to report, but next meeting I'll report something for you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Do you want to talk about the purchase relief?
You can.
Should we?
Yep.
All right, so we actually did something that I've wanted to do for a while now, it's pretty cool.
I'd like you to talk a little.
Yeah, so, and it's really exciting, actually, because we're saving a lot of money. Plows, we always need additional plow vehicles, for example. We were, we did our annual review with Onata County Solid Waste, who everyone knows they just did a release, everyone's becoming very familiar with the fact that they run, effectively, our garbage collection. Like many other funds, there's a surplus that gets managed. That surplus has grown to the point where we do have some funds that we can execute administratively to assist in the purchasing of equipment for DPW-related functions, right? Because it's the garbage collection revenues that it comes from. So, for example, a plow costs roughly $200,000 and takes three years to come in. We cannot bond or borrow money for pre-owned vehicles. We have been seeking out additional vehicles to offset the fact that we have 13 plow routes and exactly 13 plows in Utica. So we did, we found a plow on Auctions International. This is very cool, actually. We sent out the mechanics to look at it. Friday night, me and the Budget Director were on the phone, he was bidding through Auctions International. We acquired a plow, it's a 2011, a 2011, with 40,000 miles on it. This plow is much newer than, what do we have, six 1987 FWDs?
Yes.
So we currently still run six 1987 plows, right? This pre-owned plow, which we're going to put tires on and have on the road in a couple weeks when we take delivery with it, cost us, with the auction fees, about $26,000.
And what's in the way?
$200,000, and it takes three years to get it. Actually, some of the plows we purchased in 2023 are still not here. So I plan on doing this more. You can't just buy used stuff all the time, right? But this is a way to increase, we're, we're running 1987 plows, we just spent 26K to put a 2011 on the road, and it's an unbelievable machine, our mechanics went out and inspected it. We have another one that we're looking at bidding on as well, because for the price of half of one new plow, we can bring in four plows that are in much better shape than half our fleet. So it's a huge cost-cutting measure, which is really cool, but it also allows us to get equipment now. If we order 10 plows today, we're not seeing 10 plows for three years, and we're behind. We should have been upgrading our fleet for a while. So it's just one instance of this, we're going to try it a couple more times, and it's something, we investigated for fire apparatus as well years ago. This specific reserve can't be used for fire, it's only for like DPW-related equipment, but again, for the price of one debt service payment, we just got ourselves a plow. So it's pretty cool, and it saves us a boatload of money, and they're going to have extra equipment.
Can I revoice your name?
Yes.
Last year, we, we, our bid was a little late coming in on this kind of roads. Do we plan on bidding a little earlier this year?
Well, two things, we had to rebid them because the bid came back at an amount that would have exceeded what was appropriated to pave the roads. So we actually had to rebid, so that's one thing. Two, just like we discussed last year with the council, if we get a little more creative with the borrowing, if we borrowed, for example, if the council was going to borrow 5 million, or 2.5 million for the roads next year, just throwing that out there, but the council borrowed five, and we only used 2.5 of it, because you issued those bonds, we'd have enough to go out to bid for the whole thing. So that's something we could talk about for the next budget season. And we wouldn't have to use the money that year, and then each successive year, we'd already have the money to go out to the bids.
Right, but, I was talking to Nick earlier, but, but we know we're going to spend 5 million a year on the roads.
Mm-hmm.
So it doesn't matter if you have the money already, you know you're going to spend it, so why not just be the early, be the early bird to bid on the roads?
We, because, I mean, this is, Corporation Council's been to this, this room countless times telling us that unless the funds are there to award, you can't award. So if we go out to bid, and the state hasn't passed the budget yet, nor has the council bonded, we technically don't have 5 million dollars. I've tried a million different creative ways to get around that, and I seemingly can't. So, you know, if we can come up with something, by all means, let's figure it out, all right? If you guys figure it out, great.
Well, but, but, you know, you got 5 million in your general fund, so you do have 5 million.
We didn't pass our budget, yeah, so we don't know that that's appropriated either. Also, we aren't.
But that's March.
We, we don't appropriate out of our general fund for the pay.
No, but if you know you have the money, the, the state's just saying that if you know you have the money.
We don't. So the way, like municipal budgeting works, if, if you guys don't, for example, take 5 million, this is like, okay, earmarking, right? We just spoke about earmarking. If in the budget preparation, you don't take 5 million dollars from the revenue side and put it in the paving side as an expense, as far as the legality is concerned, the money's not there to bid. We have a fund balance. If I don't appropriate the fund balance, I legally can't use it for this year's budgetary purposes. That's why, for example, in this budget season, we had, I think it was like 4 million dollars of, of fund balance appropriated, because if I didn't appropriate it, you can't technically touch it. You could only spend what you say you're going to spend in the budget. We could, we could talk about it all the time, because if we figure it out, by all means, we, I'd love to bid, trust, would love to do it.
So you just, you just put it in, and then, once everything's appropriated, pull it back out, and do it?
No, you can't, because if you did that, you technically either have to raise taxes for that 5 million, and then somehow return it, which doesn't happen, or, you know, it's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did the prior administration do that check?
No, they didn't.
No, but they, 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 they.
They did a lot earlier. Yeah, but it's a separate.
Deputy Chief.
I'd like to point out that Councilman LaMedical said the last question was going to be his last question, and then he asked one after.
I got, I got some.
Okay, I just want to point that out.
You're still going to get an opportunity to speak. Deputy Chief Noonan?
What's up, or do I want to comment on the bad tax? For the last 10 years, I have two kids who have been involved in travel sports, travel all the Northeast, everywhere we've gone, there's been a bad tax, it's never deterred us from staying in certain hotels. I think we paid upers of $20 in a bad tax in some places. As a taxpayer resident, I would hope that the council would support it and pass it. I think it's great. That's just my own personal thinking.
Thank you.
Separately, Chief Williams asked me to mention the success of our GIVE program. He wanted me to introduce the technology and help us solve major cases. Homicide victims as a result of gunfire are down from last year from 2 to 5, so hopefully that stays the same throughout the, throughout the year.
From 5 to 2.
5 to 2, 5 to 2.
2. I'd like to thank Marcus Sokolowski for his work at the DPW, picking up our green waste, he's done a great job. And Stephanie Hughes up in the Corporation Council, we received a ton of forklifts lately, and she's worked hard to respond to all those forms.
Sarah.
Thank you, Chief.
You did, sorry.
But who's that from to thank you? You are the chief for me.
For you?
Yeah.
Not me.
Assistant Fire Chief Noonan.
There still leaves that crest.
I want to thank John Randall, John Randall doesn't want to.
Sounds like he's running for council, yes, man, I don't know.
Wow, wow.
And the next place, Chief.
Thank you.
Assistant Fire Chief Noonan.
I always say I'm going to sit on the other side, and every time I come here, I sit on this side. I just want to announce we have a graduating Fire Academy next Wednesday. I believe invites went out to all the council people. If you didn't get one, just see me, or contact the Fire Department, but it is the largest class we've ever graduated, or held. There are eight Utica recruits in that class, and I believe there's probably 44 graduating out of 47 that entered the academy. So we'll be a packed house at MBCC next Wednesday, but if you want to come, we do save seats for all the council people that are willing, wishing to come, so.
Thank you. Cash report? No. Petitions from Citizens and Appeals, First District Councilmember Kyal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I know we all have different opinions on how earmarking works and the bed tax. I just, that aside, I don't want anybody to be confused that, that common counsel, we absolutely have the authority to earmark funds, and I just want us to be mindful of that power we have, whether or not we decide it for bed tax. You know, anytime we bond or something, we are earmarking funds. When we receive CHIPS money, that, those funds are being earmarked. So I just think that's a side argument that I want to make sure is protected in these conversations. And as far as when we talk about, obviously, we have to pave roads, 5 million a year. I understand the argument that people want to make sure the money is in, but we also go to bond in March. I don't know if there's a way that we can split it up into two phases, and we bid out the 2.5 million that we're already bonded for and we do have the money for, and then we wait till the rest comes in. But that is all I have for the rest of the night. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Second District Councilmember and Majority Leader, Robert Burmaster.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, I had the opportunity to go to a West Utica meeting, Neighbor Association, and they had an agent there that talked about health insurance policies for the elderly. If you don't have one, you know, and you, and you need to get one, reach out to Amy Jennings, and she'd hook you up with his agent and, and walk you through the process, because I know it's confusing for a lot of your seniors, and it was a very informative meeting, and I just wanted to pass it out there for all you, you seniors, because I, I can relate to you. I want to thank everybody for coming. I want, I want to thank Deputy Chief, he made a young lady very happy with the response she got.
Make sure you clarify.
I'm aware of some instances, too.
And that would be Ed Noonan. But she was really impressed. You made her, you made her really happy.
Wow.
So, with that, enjoy your holiday and be safe, and thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Did you tell your wife about that? It was a broken window.
Oh, whatever. Whatever. That's not what I was thinking. That's why he's staying in a hotel.
Third District Councilmember, President Protop, Joseph Pitar.
Thank you. Mr. President, I don't know how to follow up on, on that, but I'll, I'll try my best. Thank you all for coming, our department heads, corp counsel, mayor. It was a good discussion we had. I know we start to get into the budget a little bit because it's right around the corner, so we are looking forward to many more discussions here. And I'll just add, I do plan on supporting local law number four. I think it's, you know, exactly what we've been talking about since the last, last fiscal year, we were dealing with the budget. And that's all tonight. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, next week. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Fourth District Councilmember, Frank Carcon.
Everything on the east side is good. The leaves are all picked up. I took a ride around today, and I got one thing to go over with Marcus before we leave, and everything else is good.
Thank you, Councilmember. Fifth District Councilmember, Vanessa Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's been a, if anybody's driven through District Five, you've probably seen Nigga Mohawk doing a lot of work, and a lot of people were complaining, and I reminded them that all of the holes that are being done on city property, because it's right next to the curb, so they got upset about that. But I know all of Stuben Street, they've been digging a lot of holes and putting a lot of stuff in there, like rubber piping, I don't know what it is, but they're doing a lot of work. And somebody else is doing work there, too, because they're putting up on Stuben Street, and they're around on Stuben Park, and you probably knew about that. I saw the concrete trucks out there today. I don't know if they're doing sewers or if they're just putting new curb in it, but there's something going on up there, but a lot of roads being blacked off on Stuben Street. If you drive through there, Nigga Mohawk's still in there doing stuff, so just find another road, or another route to go, because I just spent around in the middle of the road and took another route, because the road was blacked off from down on Rucker up Stuben Street, so I don't know what's going on.
It's all water authority.
Huh?
It's for the water authority.
Yeah, water authority. And Nigga Mohawk, what were they doing? They were in there, too.
They're changing gas lines as well.
Okay.
So, the energy code is changing. No, that's-
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's true. The energy code is changing in the interstate. So, how you got to deliver natural gas, what natural gas you can deliver is changing next year, so utility companies are trying to get all their national gas lines in this year when it's less restricted.
It's, it's not, I told people it's not a bad thing. They're obviously doing something that's going to help the neighborhood or whoever, so.
They put it back the way they found it.
Well, they're trying.
Yeah.
It's city-owned property will go after, I guess we'll have to go after it if they don't redo the grass and stuff like that, but it's a long stretch, and I'm there in Hobart Street, so just to let everybody know, if you're going through there, just be careful. That's all I got. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Sixth District Councilmember, Joseph Pitar.
Thanks, Mr. President. First thing I want to talk about is, in, in my district, very rarely do we have fires. Yesterday, we had a terrible, terrible fire, and I just want all the people out there to know how lucky we are to have our police and our fire department, how good they are. I was, I seen the call, I was there 20 minutes later. House was fully engulfed. Not only are they great firemen, when the people are out there, they were so conservative toward the lady. The lady lived in a house 58 years, her house burned down, very professional, and it was, it was an honor to see that, and I'm very thankful, and I just want the people to know, the police and the fire, we have the best in the city, and we ought to be thankful that we have them. Last, the second thing is, the next Monday night is our monthly North Utica meeting. I'll be there from 5:30 to 6:30 for office hours. The meeting starts 6:30. We're going to have a representative from the city's assessor's office and Beth Irons from the United County Farmers Market. Last thing is, you know, everybody goes around here and thanks the police chief and thanks the DPW and thanks all the department heads, because they do a good job. I want to thank our president, Rock Joritzi, okay? He's been, you know, for two years, we're at the end of his, at the end of the two years, he's came a long way from taking over from President Guelemi. I just pray that he picks up his new job a lot faster than he picks up the common council president.
I'm trying. Lastly, I just want to wish everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember-at-large and Minority Leader, Mark Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I haven't been here, I think, a month. I was in Camp Lejeune Marine Corps Base a couple weeks prior to that, and then November 2nd, I had a nasty auto accident with my mother, and when I woke up, I saw the police and fire department there, and it was like a handful of Marines. It just felt so good. I just want to say thank you for all the, all the firemen and the police officers who were there that day that brought me back to life, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember-at-large, Jack La Medical.
Thank you, Mr. President, and my favorite bartender.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for coming in today and, and handling my questions, and you did it very professionally, and I did it very professionally. Unfortunately, the person next to me didn't. On top of that, on top of that, I'd like to, our deputy chief for taking care of some traffic situations in front of Proctor High School. Students keep parking in front of the people's driveways and blocking driveways. On top of that, Mark, our DPW man, thank you for taking care of that problem on Pond Lane today. We had a large truck take down a, a huge branch laid in the middle of the street, block the street up. They came down 20 minutes later, they had it all cut up, and, and the street was back open, pretty much appreciate that. And one of my concerns, and I was talking to Marcus today on this, is that they sold that big brownstone building right next to the old Dunkin' Donuts, and that's what I was told by one of the people that worked, lived there, that you probably know who that is. And my concern is, and their concern, though, the 25 people that live in, the 25 apartments in that building, of who the landlord is going to be. And, and I could understand, are these people from out of town buying this law, this, or, you know, what, what are they going to do? What type of people are they going to bring in? Are they going to manage it well? And I was hoping maybe the city can maybe find out who the, who the owner is and place, give them a little call and tell them, you know, what we expect of our landlords when they buy a large public, a large building like that, and we don't want to ruin the, we don't want to ruin that building, because it's, it's quite the building there. So, on top of that, once again, I'd like to wish Lucretia a happy birthday, 98 years old, and she's still got more energy than me. And finally, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Proposed ordinance number one. Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Be it ordained that the city controller is hereby authorized and directed to make the following transfer. Account B858611.441, contracted services software, $30,000. Exclamation, transfer to covered overage due to bulk software purchase. Eight yes, adopted. Can I get a motion in a second to introduce proposed resolution number two?
Motion.
Authorizing an engineering planning grant for Nail Creek Floodplain Restoration Project. Votes, please. Eight yes, adopted. Can I get a motion, a motion in a second to introduce proposed ordinance number three?
A motion to commit.
Anyone oppose? Commit.
Was this, is this on the-
This was on the garage sale, the permit, yeah.
Yeah, let me put this in.
Yeah, we, yeah. Proposed local law number four. We're going to table this.
Before we lay it on the table, I'd like to make that motion to amend, just while we're all here. Move to amend the section 1-22-67, to strike that, replace with 1-25-67.
Second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. But he wanted to make the-
We're just moving to amend, so we don't have to-
Anyone oppose?
No, we'll be voting for that.
So, we have a local law amended, the Utica City Code, Chapter 25, to include implementation of city of Utica occupancy tax. The controller of the city of Utica or such other person as may be designated by the mayor to administer and collect the tax provided for herein a hotel building portion thereof, which is retainable or consisting of rentable unit providing lodging and on an overnight basis for guests. The term hotel includes an apartment hotel, a motel, short-term rentals, vacation rentals, and facilities designated and commonly known as bed and breakfast and similar tourist facilities, whether or not means are served. Imposition of occupancy tax exempt organizations, territorial limitations, registration, administration and collection, records, returns.
So, you guys raised it on the table, or what did you do?
We're gonna-
Yeah.
Oh, you're still reading?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
You're just fixing that one color.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure it was, okay.
Yeah. Payment of tax, determination of tax. Refunds, disposition of revenues, reserves, remedies, exclusive, proceeding to recover tax, general powers of controller relative to occupancy tax, administration of ults and compelling testimony, penalties and interest, notices, limitations of time, construction and enforcement, separability, findings, effective date, the local law should take effect January 1st, 2026 upon filing in the Office of New York Secretary of State in accordance with Section 27 of Municipal Home Rule Law, and shall continue for a period of two years from the date of said enactment, except that certifies the registration may be filed, and certificates of authority to collect tax may be issued prior to said date. Nothing in this section shall prohibit the adoption, enactment of future local laws pursuant to the provisions of New York State Tax Law, Section 1202, upon the expiration of this local law. So.
Motion, do I have it on the table?
On the table. Anyone oppose? Table. A motion in a second to, anything on the committee?
No. Motion to adjourn?
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Next committee meeting can be at 5:30.
5 o'clock.
5 o'clock on-
December 3rd.
December 3rd, okay. Motion in a second to adjourn? Okay, adjourn.